I'm happy to take the microphone again. Ultimately, the decision is the board's. I was only making a suggestion because you do have so many things you need to consider.
Yes.
And it is so hard to have the entire board negotiate amongst, in a form like this, and have any kind of a consensus. So usually when it comes down to situations like this, having a smaller group that's dedicated to making those decisions and recommendations to the board is something that I recommend. You don't have to do that, but...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
A leading question?
Sure.
Is that executive session or does that have to, is that your question too, Mike? Or does that have to be an open session?
Well, it depends. It depends on if you have a quorum or not. You don't have to have a quorum of, you don't have to have a public meeting if you don't have a quorum.
Well, committees are public meetings, but if it's, as Brian pointed out, if it's a negotiation, is that executive session? We're going to be talking about money.
Well, again, if you're, if you're talking about, I'd have to think about it. I know you're going to be talking about money. I would think you could have an executive session. And I would, I would, I would base it on the fact that you'd be discussing the exercise potentially of a legal right, but I would want to get back to you on that, to be sure.
So if we were to invite Dan into executive session, is that what you're asking?
No, what I'm asking is because we're going to be talking about an agreement and specifics and money, to me, it seems, what did you, what term did you use?
The potential exercise of a legal right. But I would, again, I would want to get back to, you're not purchasing real estate here, you're not leasing real estate here.
Well, the Hart Jarvis house is potentially...
Well, I guess, yeah, arguably then. Yep. I would want to, again, just look at the...
Oh, I understand.
...the opinions on that before I, before I was convinced. But, but I think my reason for suggesting a smaller group of discussion, again, is just to make it easier for you to reach some kind of a recommendation for the rest of the board. But you, you know, certainly you don't have to take my advice on that. I was just, you know, it was just a suggestion I was making.
Did you have any questions?
My question was, could we go into executive session to discuss this? You know, I'm going to take it right back to when Ellen started this evening. I think, I've been fortunate enough to sit on boards and legislative boards in two different communities, and I think that what you get to see is the very best of people who give up their time, their thought processes, and share and want what's best for any community. What I heard tonight is that what's on the table can be the only thing that's on the table. I think there's a desire amongst the members here to have further discussion. I'd like to have us have some way to have that discussion. I know, Dan, you'd like an answer to this evening.
So Carrie, what are you saying? We can't go in unless you research this more?
No, we can't.
Well, you would, you wouldn't...
Sorry. Carrie, you're...
That's okay. Again, without, you wouldn't be able to do that tonight, the executive session, unless you amended your agenda. You'd have to, and...
Have you accepted our agenda?
Yeah. So, so that's something that wouldn't be able to happen tonight. You'd have to properly notice that, the executive session, and state the reason that you're going into executive session. The public has a right to that kind of notice. You do have the right to invite Dan, or Mary, or anybody else who you think is important into that executive session as part of that discussion. But again, they're only supposed to participate for as long as you need them to provide information.
Did Deion's catch that?
Yes. So Dan, your stand is not going to change, is that correct?
I can't understand why I can't get feedback on the core parameters.
I think what Dan's looking for is, is to poll the board right now to see if there's even a majority that's willing to move in the same, in the direction of what he's asking for, but...
Because right now, it's not worth continuing all this other process. It just doesn't make sense, and I don't want everyone to like to waste time, including all the people who work so hard on this with us. So we're just trying to understand where this is, knowing that even if we have a vote for, we haven't done anything if we have a signed agreement. That's been proven, right? And so the question of the hour is, you want us to put $30 million into this project, and I would hope that in a year and a half, we're checked out enough to deliver when we make a commitment. So if the plan, in your view, doesn't balance the needs of the community, go against it because that stops it. If we have a path where we say, there are more details to work out, there's so much ahead of us, and I outlined in economic development meeting last night, all of the other risk factors that we have going forward, we're stepping off, and I believe the same way that you are. There's no question about it. And so there's six historic buildings, doesn't it? We have to all go out and say, we're good with three, and get that rolled back, right? For three other structures, post site plan approval with zoning. There's a lot of investments, a lot of working together that is in front of us. And so we don't, we don't go away if we have the green light, an expression, because here's the thing, if we go by the percentage of time shared with the Board of Selectmen, it's been basically negative input on what we're trying to do from Mr. Surratt and Mr. Butt, and that's fine. Your representatives of the town, your two votes, I'm asking for everyone to say whether or not we can get on board with this concept, and then we can work together. If we can't, we shun it. We're just tying people up.
Susan, if I could go next?
I'm sorry? Ben? Before I say yes, Kitch, did you have anything else?
Thank you.
Susan put her, her position, I think, on the table to work, and mine isn't that different. I want to work, but the reality is I don't, I don't like the ratio of what you have in front of us. I think I'm in favor of a mixed-use development. I was in favor of the last one. I believe it was 150,000, give or take, commercial, and it was 82,000, give or take, residential. I got on board with that. I was comfortable with that. I think this one, if they were 1,000 square feet per apartment, which we don't know, that would be 240,000 square feet, give or take, of residential use, and right now, we're talking about 75,000 to 92,000 business use. To me, that ratio doesn't work. I personally want to see either less residential or more commercial to make me more comfortable. So you asked for a poll...
No, Ben, I have no aspirations to make you more comfortable. You're not going to vote for this. I know that, okay?
No, you don't.
So that's, and that's okay.
Bring me back the, bring me back the 150 and the 82, and I'll vote, so you can't make that statement. You can't make that statement.
You know how many kids, school kids, live in studio apartments? None, okay?
Well, I wouldn't use that statement either.
No, I'm saying in terms of what would go on...
You're saying there's no kids that live in a studio apartment?
No.
That's what you just said, but okay.
You're projecting...
You also said I wouldn't vote for this, so two things that I didn't agree with.
Well, this may be, maybe apples and oranges on this, but it's not, Susan, I believe you're referencing...
I am not asleep.
No, no, no. I don't...
I am awake. Kathy, are you awake?
Barely.
Okay.
But I think that the, my request for...
I'm committed to moving forward.
Yes. And so a request for a vote tonight on those core parameters, knowing that then we have to assign...
What we generally do is a consensus, so we can, if...
But I think we need to listen to what our lawyer has suggested.
Okay.
And, and by listening and putting a, you know, concise timeframe on it, I feel that that would be better for everyone.
I understand.
I don't feel, I don't want to be pushed to make this answer, to give you an answer tonight.
What kind of, one minute, please, if you would, Dan? Sorry. Do you have an idea of the time, Kathy? You're pretty good at knowing calendars and suggestions in that regard.
Well, I think in two weeks.
Dan, do you think a consensus to move forward with a committee would give you the comfort level that you have?
I don't know why the Selectmen would want to form a committee when this piece of it can't change.
See, but that's my point, Dan. That's my point, Dan.
But remember, we talked about getting to know each other and working together, and I know that we've spent an awful lot of time together, and maybe that's, that's been good. We're talking about a two-week process that we're requesting. It's the style of this board. It is the way we conduct our business respectfully. I think that we're in a good place, and we stated that within two weeks, I think we'll have the consensus that you're asking for at 10:45.
Okay, but the, excuse me. What would, what would be presented in two weeks?
Carrie, did you hear what you suggested?
Again, ultimately, I know. I see, I'm feeling a little uncomfortable because I don't want to cram an idea down your throat. I made a suggestion that you get a committee together to try to work out some of these bugs that would make you feel more comfortable giving a consensus over what the tax abatement would look like going forward. From my perspective, I think you all should decide whether you even want to have a subcommittee. And I think that goes to Dan's point that, you know, if there's a consensus here that having a subcommittee to discuss this further is worthwhile, I think Dan should accept you at your word that you're going to work hard at trying to come to a consensus. And if you're not interested in the committee, then I think that's also the, sends a message to Dan as to whether...
Who was interested in the committee? Is that it? Did you set up a queue?
No, I said I would try. She brought it up.
If I could ask something as well.
So I understand what Dan's asking for, and I understand he spends a long time getting to these points, just trying to get back to the point it was before. I personally don't think many minds will be changed if we wait a day or a week or an hour or two weeks in terms of the seven-year tax deferment and the $30 million. I do think that if we had a vote right now, the decision would be much different, a week or two from now, so I think that's kind of pushing it that way, personally. But I do think some of the other things, the $30 million investment and maybe some other things that will go along with that are definitely going to be a discussion. Probably find a whole board, three of the houses, you know, what happens to the other three. Those are big things with that. And I think what you're asking for, I think is pretty reasonable, is to either say yes or no to the seven-year deferral or defer, because that's what you need to make it work. And if that can be done, whatever the vote is, right, people from whatever dollar, and you're going to commit $30 million, Dan, working out those other important details too can be done at another day.
And we embrace doing so.
So my question to you, Carrie, is, is there a way, if we were to, to do a vote tonight, whether it's binding or not, binding, whatever it's going to be, to a vote that says, here's what each person's position is, but the final decision in two weeks or a week or a day, whatever it's going to be, to work out all the final details will then be the binding decision, or at least everything is transparent, if it was kind of said, there's yea or nay. I would be in favor of that. So how would we do that? And, and how do we get that done?
If you were to have that kind of a vote, I would want it to be subject to further discussion and board approval of all of the other parameters of what that agreement's going to look like. I don't know if that's going to satisfy Dan. He wants a point...
No, 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 I would, I would satisfy him because that was where I was going and saying there's...
But it would be contingent, Dan, so you understand. They'd be saving, they'd be saving...
It'd be too cute when I was saying, even no matter what they move on, it doesn't mean anything until we have executed...
It does to them. It means a lot to them.
But it got rescinded last time, and so we're just trying to get back to something and to...
Well, see, Dan, I don't think that's being fair. What got rescinded was the approval of a plan that was no longer on the table. And, and so it was no different than, if you will, effectively, a withdrawal and a resubmission on your part of a concept plan that was substantially different. So I, first of all, so let me just say, I don't think that was fair. So what I'm saying to you now is, if you ask them to say, will you commit right now to a seven-year deferral if I commit to invest $30 million over five years in this project, I would say that their vote would have to be subject to, and you would have to accept the fact. It'd be subject to further discussion and parameters, and if you can't reach a consensus on the further discussion of parameters, then the vote tonight means nothing.
And I agree with that.
So...
And I support that action.
Okay. You've heard that. So that's, I mean, the choice is yours, it's how you want to proceed.
So if I was to be talking about, if you're on the, or you're on, that at the end of this two-week period, will actually have an agreement? The actual...
No, I think at the end of the two-week period, we would hopefully have a consensus on the part of the board as to what the agreement needed to look like, what were the core principles that were important to them. We know what your core principles are, but the, but they haven't had an opportunity to...
And so would actually draft terms and show these terms to the board? Is that what your vision is?
That's, that's what I understood, but again, I'm not, not a member of the board.
That's what Kathy and I are agreeing to.
I think that makes sense.
And I think it would make everyone more comfortable to see the actual document.
It's not final.
No. How can it be final, final?
It would have to come back to the board for approval.
Exactly. We just have a draft that we didn't...
But it's going to require their input. I don't know what to put in the draft until they've had a discussion.
Well, the key's there. May I answer that?
I just threw it out there. So I, the question I asked was, so what's...
I would rather that Carrie repeat what she said a few minutes ago. You put...
Okay. Okay. What I'm saying is, is that if you were inclined to, to make a motion tonight and vote on his request that you commit to approving a seven-year fixed tax abatement, if he could invest $30 million in this project over five years, but it would have to be subject to further discussion of other parameters that would need to be, that, that agreement would have to be subject to. Maybe it's the percentage of commercial. Maybe it's, I don't know what it is. Those are for your decisions to make. And what I wanted Dan to, to agree to is the notion that you can make that motion tonight, and you can vote on that tonight, but he's got to understand that the door is still wide open, because if you can't reach a consensus on all of these other issues, then it's, you're right back where you started from.
No, I, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to know exactly what we're voting on. I, Carrie, I respect, I know you're trying to come up with something that works, and I, I get, but this is obviously very important to a lot of residents. I think we should have all the facts on the table, what, whatever it is, right down to, you know, if the concept plan is what we're going to base it on, then that's what the approval should be based on, and so on. We, we should have every detail of what we're considering or not considering. We shouldn't sit here... No, 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 I, I can, I can concede with the concept plan. I mean every detail of what we would want as a criteria as part of the agreement. And I, I wouldn't want to sit here and say, well, we'll negotiate it in the future. To me, that doesn't work.
No, no, the economic terms are what I'm trying to get a sense for among the futures that are due, so I can excuse you. And so it's not binding. It's...
We already...
...back to us because I am inclined to withdraw our application because I get more nervous. I brought my wife from Colorado here to go through this and weigh in, because I've labored over this. I've really tried to make this work, but I'm taking hits everywhere, internally on this, in the leasing process with the one tenant, right? I tried to get it together.
That's just the alarm for the door.
So I'm, I'm out of time to kind of just sort of maybe work on something maybe happening in the future and do this on a slow, at a slow rate. We have to be going forward to get the site plan application into the zoning commission so that we could possibly get to this stage, so that we could then take this one commercial tenant who wants to go do other stuff and say something reasonable about it, and when we can give them a part of the project to build on.
No, it's...
But my point is this, there are many moving pieces, and we have high end requirements to address. And I don't think that we have, in an unusual way, we were here a month ago, we were communicating in between meetings, Ben saying since the very beginning that we needed, again, pursuing the one through eight recommendations from the DCI report, the regulation change was one of them, the tax abatement is another. We needed those, we've got sand all on, make the rest of the investment keepers going. If we get over this hump, we're in. The judgment call on my side is saying, do we want to be in because I feel that there's either not the experience or this scale of development, and then therefore not the appetite. And I think that when I'm, when I'm, I mean it, Kitch, when you said it was, I've done this in six weeks in other environments, and a year and seven or eight months is, is extraordinary, and it's all ingrained in the relationship that I've had since I was this big, what I... So I'm out of, I'm out of tricks to hold this together on my side, and now I get, I have, I have no buy-in from certain people for all kinds of different reasons, and that's fair, because everybody can have their own opinion, and I can have my own investment strategy that gets employed out in the world, and I, and I can tell Fred that I did everything I could, which is the heart-to-heart I've had, and so...
In all fairness, Dan, Susan, may I speak?
Yes.
I think it's important, you say there's no buy-in from, and I think you're alluding to Brian and myself. I think you have to be a little more open-minded and fair in to consider, you know, Susan mentioned before that, you know, we want to be competitive with other towns, we don't want to miss the boat kind of thing, I don't want to put words in her mouth. But the reality is, we would want to make it comparable to, say, the development in East Hampton. We'd want to see the terms they used. It was a mixed-use development.
You have plenty of time to do that research and...
Right, and here, right. Let me, let me finish, that's fine, let me finish. In there, in the other ones that I've seen, they're not a full boat, seven years, all or nothing. It's a negotiation. See, the difference that I've seen from the other, when you come in, and, you know, the article in the paper and what you said tonight, seven years or nothing, that's not a negotiation. So for you to say Brian and I have made up our minds...
The Hart Jarvis house, and then remove Sage, all these things are...
I haven't put any of those houses in, first of all. The houses have to do with you and planning and zoning and, and what you're required to do.
The unanimous endorsement of the DCI report, whatever we want to call the positive action taken on the DCI report by the Selectmen last year that then became a building block for the town's plan for conservation and development, that then informed the regulation change that got cited by the EDC, I don't know how to check off more boxes.
But...
Alan wrote a very interesting letter about the broad-based support that has been built through this town. I don't have more than I can do on this, and so I don't know why I would keep going on this if I couldn't get fundamental endorsement on the most basic thing.
No, no problem. You, you bring up...
And everybody says, oh, you're being too harsh. It's ridiculous. I'm frustrated, beyond frustrated.
Okay. Uh, let's see. You're not finished, and then Mike.
Yep. You bring up the historic structures, which, that was the reason for the text change, to allow the increase up to 240 apartments, so the historic...
Because, because it doesn't make it true, it's not what I ever said. It was an enforcement of the 2015 plan. I never thought anyone was going to revisit the economics of the 2015 tax deferral scenario, right? And so the, but what I'm saying is, that was the starting point. The second step was the zoning amendment. It became the first step when the other one evaporated. That's my experience. You can believe me or not, that's what I was working on, but when I said to people, we can do this and that and this, and we can find the plan over a new year and a half...
Well, just, just so you know, from my perspective, when I got on the board, I was told that was not an agreement. That was the right to negotiate an agreement with you and bring it back to the board for a full boat, so...
Well, if you had been at the meeting at that time, I said, you probably remember, this is a two-way street, okay? I'm getting to know the town of Portland, and this is before I spent a year and a half crafting a plan that was creative and actually solves the problem, is articulated by the entire community. It's unheard of for me. I've never had a job where we went through every other board, every other stakeholding group, and we're stuck on the executive level. This is, this never happens. It's, it's, it just blows my mind.
Well, wasn't there another town that took away or wanted to take away a tax payment? Wasn't that on the executive level?
Is that relevant to what we're talking about?
I thought it would be relevant.
Then before the answer is no. There's never been a town that wanted to do that. There was...
Certain people.
I don't know all the...
That's why I asked it. Well, that's why I asked it, so we could, I don't know all the details, that's why I asked it.
Fair enough. Is it ready for Michael to take the floor? Michael?
I just, I think, I think what Dan is asking for, to me, is reasonable, if it's a non-binding, and we're going to, and it's, it's getting a feel for what each person's position is, based on the amount of effort that's gone in. I'm not just saying that for mixed little thing, but I think it's fair and reasonable, and I think we have to look at the project as entirely to, I mean, I saw the contract, East Hampton contract, and I think after five years, it went down and whatever, and I get that, but I think you can't ignore the fact that there's going to be a significant investment. I'm not sure what the cost is for those historic homes down there, and, you know, that's part of Portland, and that's part of our town, and it's part of our heritage, and I think that's important, and the fact that, you know, whatever contract you want to do, that it adds, that, that's important to me as well. So I, I guess I would have no problem with us doing that today. I would love to make a motion on that, how we do that.
You can certainly make a motion. Yeah, you can certainly make a motion.
So I would like to make a motion that we offer a, I guess, a seven-year tax fixing deferment, whatever the terms is.
Fixed taxed assessment?
Thank you. I can say that massive amount. In exchange for $30 million spent during the five-year period, with a caveat that we would, within the next two weeks or whatever date we set, within a reasonable amount of time, finalize the details to the majority of the boards.
There, there is within there, I think, another matter, that's $30 million over five years.
Over five years, huh?
And be subject to other parameters as well.
Yeah. And I think he was getting to that.
Yeah, and, and in whatever way, you know, covers the other deeper. I think, I think I'd like to put that out.
A hundred percent of the Pearl of Assessment increased by the size of your, I mean, a hundred percent of it's a deferred.
Yes.
Yeah. Will the board be taking public comment for the vote? I don't think we'll vote for the town as of yet. Correct.
We didn't open the public comments?
No, we did.
We did.
We did.
I thought we didn't. I thought you said it wasn't. You said that we were discussing and that...
That's on Mr. Virgin's phone.
One, we're speaking, I'll be with you in a second.
I'll leave it to you. I thought we'd open, so we'd be able to talk, but I don't...
It's just, it's just protocol, I'm trying to keep a meeting going properly. There's a motion on the floor. I don't know whether the Selectmen want to allow the comments during the discussion period. It's very atypical. It's not something we do. The only other thing that can happen is, there's, can be a withdrawal of your motion, and you may sit here, I will tell you, for another hour, unless you allow me, as your consensus, no more than three minutes or two minutes for each person, because you have a lot of people here that may want to speak, some for half an hour. So I'm just trying to, to be your chairman here. What do you want? Kitch?
I'm generally not in favor of a time limit, but I would think a three-minute time limit would be...
Are you in favor or not, tonight?
Of, of the, right, of the three-minute time limit? Yes.
Okay. Michael?
Yes.
Brian? Yes. Ben?
I'd like it to what it needs, but...
Well, then you're not in favor. That's fine.
Your question was...
I think I have four already.
Yeah, you do.[1786.12][1786.12][laughter]
Poor Fred.
Poor Fred.
It doesn't matter.[1790.12]
God, Fred.
It doesn't matter.
I want some graphics for it.
I know.
Next time, start at the other end of the table, please.
Fred abstained.
Fred?
I didn't, I didn't hear your, I didn't even hear the...
What I'm saying is, there's, uh, Michael has withdrawn his motion.
Correct, okay.
Michael?
I will drop my motion.
Yes.
Public comment.
So, public comment, and I made the note that if every person spoke for half an hour, you'll be, you will definitely be here till tomorrow, maybe the next day. So, I'm asking if you would allow me to limit three minutes for each person.
Very definitely, but I want to make a comment. I will not stay for the whole time. I had a minor surgery and I'm supposed to be up walking a lot more than I have tonight. So, I'll stay for a while, but that, I won't be here.
I'm making a motion, Fred can walk behind me.
That, that could be problematic for you if you're going to have a vote later on a motion. I just point that out. You know, it's up to you to decide whether you're going to allow public comment.
Well, it's, it's up to the board, it's their meeting.
Do you want the public comment at this point? Start with Fred.
You're talking about Michael's, now we're back to Michael's.
No, we're talking about whether you want to allow the audience to speak.
Fine, fine with me. I would say yes.
We have a poll of hands, who's going to speak quick?
Who wants to speak tonight?
Just so we have an idea. One, two, three.
Three.
Okay. I say we let the public speak.
Well, that's not a commitment.
But Susan's in charge, I mean, so what do I, I'm a nobody.
Listen, I'm more than happy...
I just need to agree with you.
I'm more than happy to vote. I think, I respect other people's wishes here. I will say that I understand Dan's frustration, and I would have anticipated this whole process way back when going entirely differently. I would have thought that there would have been negotiations and discussions going on upfront, that the process seems odd to me.
Kathy, do you want public comment?
Um, I, I'm ready to vote.
I'll take the public comment. So, what do we got so far? Three? Is that enough?
I'll vote.
This end of the table.
Point if people want to talk, it's fine.
Yeah, I would say if people want to say something, it's only a couple, I think it's worth hearing, like I was saying.
We got two people want to talk?
I think we got four.
Two or...
I'd like to hear what they say.
Out of three-minute limit?
Yes. All right. So, we're having public comment, and we'll start with this side of the room. Front row, second row, third row. Don, did you want to speak?
To speed things up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Donald Snyder, 295 Middle Hattam Road. Mr. Serb, do you know your left from right?
I do.
Okay, because the woman here was laughing at me, was asking earlier in the crowd, just figured you may want to know that. Okay, uh, to get started here, um, never again has there been our, never in our history has there been a residential use-style tax abatement. Uh, I really don't know why we'd start this now. I think everybody's trying to figure out if we were negotiating in good faith here tonight. There are a lot of variables, as Mr. Bertram's very frustrated. Many members of the audience are here, many folks on the board, I can see the dismay in your faces here. You know, here we are, you know, a year, eight months into it, we have a conceptual plan for a $30 million development on 111 by 17 sheet. That's what you're going to base this whole decision on. Not a very big elaborate plan. Typically, these tax abasements, they benefit commercial uses. As folks brought up earlier, you can buy a lot of large equipment, you can get personal property tax off it, just like Mary said, that has a huge advantage. You don't have that in a residential aspect here. Essentially, the town taxpayers are funding up five to seven million dollars here. That's a big deal. There must be a lot of people in this room who have a lot of money. I'm concerned about that number, that's a big number to me. When we look at a $30 million buy-in from the developer, again, great sum of money, we're contributing up to $7 million of that money over a time period, right? And the difficulty with that time period, everyone here is familiar with basic economics, depreciation. So, here we are, seven, eight, nine, 10 years down the road on some of these projects, they're depreciated, and they're paying at a lower level of taxes. Now we're playing catch-up. We operate, operated in the last seven-plus years in a deficit to fund this. Basic economics is going to be like the national debt for us. It could take us 10, 20 years afterwards to dig out from this. We don't know that. That's all, I'll keep it brief. Thank you for your time tonight, and I trust you'll make the proper decisions. Thank you.
Anyone else in that row? Back row? Jim, you had your hand up?
Yeah, Jim Tripp, 74 Middle Hattam Road. I'm in favor especially with the subject to clause, because I think that gives a good indication for the developer to know that the town has the appetite and has the opportunity to nail down some of the details that folks have indicated need to be nailed down. Given the demographics that are being targeted, 71% studios or one-bedroom, and that would leave 29% of two-bedrooms, that's really going to target, I think, a demographic that could help the downtown, that could bring more energy and more money down into the downtown, help those local businesses. I know there could be some competition, but I don't think that's been defined yet, but it is going to definitely bring more money into the downtown, not even talking about taxes. Looking at it from a school perspective, that's always something that gets brought up. When you look at it using the 71% number, which is a slightly different number than we had last time, it's a good number, and you apply it to the 284, that would mean, using that .31 kids per unit ratio, 26 kids could be added to the school system, given those, given that target. As we've talked about before, that is, from the school system and the capacity in the existing system, essentially negligible. That's not going to have any significant impact. If this was to go to a low-income model where the town loses complete control or just about complete control over that development, then you could see 400 units, which was talked about. If those 400 units came in at that same 31% ratio, you'd see 124 kids potentially, plus more, you don't know. You don't know if that 31% ratio holds up in that type of a development. I think it's a good thing to try to get that virtuous cycle going in town, getting that energy, and also getting Portland thought of maybe as a place where it's good to do some additional development. I think that that's something we really need to do in terms of the, the image and the culture that we have in town. I think that's it. Thank you.
Anyone in this front row? I'm sorry, sir, you were in the back.
Tim Roy, 18 Fox Run Road, here in Portland. First, I want to thank Dan and Fred for their patience and their grace throughout this whole entire process. Board of Selectmen, you've been elected as leaders in this community, and as such, we the people trust you to make fair and impartial decisions, right, for the betterment of our community. I implore you to vote in favor of this proposed tax abatement, because you have the opportunity and the ability to add much-needed revenue to our town, essentially from day one, more than we're receiving today. Giving away five to seven million dollars does not, it's, to me, that, that muddles the story in the message. I think it's a mixed message, and I think it's misleading. Today, we're getting $94,000 a year in taxes from these properties. After we sign this abatement, the property taxes are going up to $140,000, $150,000. So, right there, there's a gain, let alone the improvements that are going to come thereafter. Anyhow, I believe that the Board of Selectmen is doing a great disservice to this town if they do not grant the seven-year tax abatement and truly partner with this developer. Members of the board have been recipients of tax abatements in the town of Portland, fully understand the need and the justification for approval of such requests. Dan Bertram is actually willing to invest $30 million in our community, which will benefit this town for many, many years to come. And, you know, it's, it's funny, being in town for the past couple of years, I've heard rumors and completely false information, misleading information, about this project. And whether it's at school or on the fields or in social media feeds, I see stories of freebies for the developer and the likelihood of adverse effects on our town and the population. However, extensive market research conducted by VCI has proven this to not be true, and in fact, it's quite the contrary. So, when I finally started to dig into the meeting minutes, I was pleasantly surprised to see the developer has been very open and very flexible while working with the town of Portland. His willingness to take a chance in this community and this market should be admired with gratefulness and appreciation. After conducting my own research, reading the minutes, the papers, seeing other projects that Dan has completed, and finally having the opportunity to speak last night, I'm confident that partnering, partnering with Dan Bertram will have a positive impact on my town, my property value, and ultimately, my family's well-being. I have concerns about the vote tonight, because at one time, the Board of Selectmen had made a deal with Dan, which was later rescinded, albeit maybe there's changes, maybe not, but there was a deal made and it was rescinded. Additionally, in our small town, there's an overwhelming amount of rumors, okay, about personal gains, inside information being shared, and that may compromise a vote by this board. And unfortunately, these rumors cannot be as easily vetted, right, as the ones about adverse effect or freebies for the developer. So, for this part, for this vote, and, you know, I, I would ask that any member of this board that feels in any way conflicted about this opportunity, remove themselves from the vote. It's the right thing to do. Neither ethical nor legal concerns should cloud the opportunity that sits before the town's people. The town cannot afford to lose its development partner. This is an important step for Portland to move forward and embrace an opportunity to realize more tax revenue immediately, repair historic sites, and, and bring more business into this town. I'm going to leave you with this. We, the people of Portland, have elected you, okay, to make decisions on our behalf, and not every member of our society has the ability to see opportunity when there's nothing tangible to hold. Many of us are getting wrapped up with small details, rumors, and hearsay. Many of us do not have the time or the patience to attend every meeting or read all the minutes, and that is exactly why we've elected you. You're elected leaders of this town, elected representatives of Portland's people, and do what's best for this community. This responsibility is one that requires you to be forward-looking with the ability to make tough decisions for the growth and protection of our town. Not as going to make the right decision, the popular one, and make tough ones.
Are there, are there any other people who want to speak tonight? Thank you, Jim. Anyone else that wants to speak tonight?
We're, we're applauding the suggestion that there's some sort of unethical activity on the board, is that, is that my understanding?
Was that, was it an excellent, excellent overview?
Yep.
I think that closes public comment.
So, I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
Want to make sure I worded correctly, please correct me, Susan, or please correct me if I'm mistaken.
And thank you, everyone, for your public comments.
Yes, thank you. So, I'd like to make a motion that we offer a seven-year...
Fixed tax assessment.
Assessment to Dan and his company at 100%, in exchange for a $30 million investment over a five-year period. This vote tonight is in lieu of a final...
And subject to...
Subject...
Could you help us with that, legally?
I'm looking for some help here.
Yeah. Subject to further discussion and agreement as to other parameters that would go into or, or be, that the incentive would be conditioned for. All right, we need to make sure that the recording secretary has that motion, and she does not.
Could I have one clarification?
No, not while he's speaking. But after he speaks, Ben, can, is that okay?
Ben, please jump in.
You're in charge, it's got to be okay.
No, no, you can object.
No, no, I'm not objecting.
But I will let you... Carrie, Carrie, can you assist? I want to make sure that our recording secretary gets the motion.
Okay, this is Michael's motion.
This is Michael Pelton.
I understood. He's making a motion that the board approve of a fixed tax assessment at a 100% value over a seven-year period in return for the developer's commitment...
Value over seven years?
Over seven years. In return for the developer's commitment to invest $30 million in the project over a five-year period...
Hold on. Okay, $30 million? Go ahead.
Over a five-year period, all of which is further subject to the agreement by the board of other conditions...
Parameters, other parameters?
Parameters, uh, on which this incentive would be conditioned.
I would say parameters and conditions. And Ben had a clarification?
You want parameters and conditions?
First parameter.
It's, it's Michael's motion, Michael, what would you like?
I was like parameters and conditions.
Okay.
You know, I knew it.
I just wanted clarification on who it was...
Ben wanted, Ben wanted a cl... The motion's on the floor. There's no discussion by the audience. Ben?
The only, the only thing I was going to add is, and...
There will be app...
Please come, some, go ahead.
In the original motion, you said Dan and his company. I want to be clear, this would be a tax payment for one, and we should probably clarify for who, and that should be in the motion. It shouldn't be Dan and his company. It was awful loose, and I, I mean that respectfully, which...
I'm sorry, well, I, I didn't get my balance, I...
So, we're offering the tax abatement to the company, not to Dan and...
Right, well, to be...
Or to whoever it was asking, I don't know.
Well, to the applicant.
For the applicant, thanks.
Right.
Because he had both in there. I just wanted clarification.
That's good, so would it be to the applicant?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ben, that's important. Is there a second? I'll second it. Discussion.
Can I just ask a question? Carrie, you, on which this incentive, what was that last part after incentive?
Uh, on which this incentive would be conditioned.
Thank you. Discussion.
All I'd like to say is, obviously, what I, it's just reiterating, reiterating, I think this is a very large, over, a large percentage residential in a mixed-use. I think the ratio is too heavy residential use for me to support it this time as far as discussion.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a roll call vote. Fred?
Pass. Pass.
What does that mean?
Well, it means that I, I'll vote after everybody else.
Oh, okay. Ben?
No.
Kathy?
No.
I'm a yes?
No.
Yes.
No?
Three-three, huh?
I don't know, you didn't vote?
No, it's four.
What was Michael's?
No, it already, it already fell.
It already fell. Four-two. Oh, here's something. No, it's four-two.
No, it's three-three.
It's four-two.
Thank you for your time.
Maybe it's called yes.
Still four-three. Thank you, Carrie.
I wasn't kidding when I told you to walk around.
Thank you. Oh, no, they're much greater, Matt, you're registering.
I didn't even know he was talking about you.
Oh, yeah.
For the record, how did you vote?
I voted, yeah, he did, yeah, he, he put that in.
Sure.
After the meetings, I'd say it on the outside, say Tom.[1676.74]
No.
Not yet.
Just breathing.
Susan.
He said, Tom, he said, that's scary.
Susan, how time-sensitive is executive session?
Um, I don't know.
Your call.
Decide when I get there.
No, no, I'm just saying, if we would want to make a motion, it's skip to your call.
Good luck.
Thanks to see you. Good luck.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
No, thanks. Susan. Thank you. Brian, that's my right. Okay.
Yeah, just agree with you. That's the way it is. Hold it personally.
Hey, oh, I've been more of the professional.
Take care, again. Take care, everyone.
Bye, take care.
Okay, we're still in session. We'll wait for Kathy to return. Are there any appointments to boards and commissions tonight?
No.
Just in case the audience is wondering, there is no more public comment tonight, okay? Because we moved it up, just, just to clarify. I wanted to update you on the tie-in bond water and wastewater capital improvements plan and the rate impact analysis. Some of you have picked up the books, some of you have not had a chance to do so, and tie-in bond indicated, I think, a $5,000 cost to come and speak to you and discuss the work that they have done. So, do you want them to come?
So, they're charging 500, 5,000 bucks to come down here and...
That, that was one number. I can get more information, but that was one number that I was told, because it was not part of their contract, their $50,000 contract. Now, you either have them come, or you can review them yourselves, and we can...
Can you see if they'll take 2,500 for the day?
I don't think...
I'm not kidding, either. Laugh all you want.
I think you're right.
Hey, life's all about negotiating.
Could you repeat what you said?
Uh, could you see if they're willing to take 2,500 for the evening, and maybe only bring one person, and dumb down the demonstration, at least give us the basics? I'd be fine with that.
I don't, I don't want to spend 5,000 if we don't have to. So, if they have a smaller version without videos or something, I would be satisfied with that, if I, I got...
I, I don't know if it's, if it's just a fee that, that they have, I will find out. The next is a resolution that you have in your packets for request of waiver for bid requirements, RS technical tractor and camera for the pipeline inspections, and this had to do with the purchase of the equipment that you approved through, remember with Cromwell?
Yep.
That was the joint purchasing of equipment, and it's on the green sheet.
And the waiver...
I'll give you a minute to read it. It's the ICE grant.
And the bid waiver would be because we already know who we're getting it from, kind of thing, right?
Um, let's see. The town of Cromwell, sue administrators stated that WH Rose of Columbia, Connecticut is the sole source distributor of such products in this area. Therefore, Cromwell uses WH Rose solely for purchasing and repairs of such equipment, and whereas WH Rose has held the pricing and amount of $38,885 that was included in the grant application, now therefore be it resolved in the best interest of the town pursuant to this town charter, the Board of Selectmen hereby waives the bidding requirements of section 1208 of the Portland Charter as it pertains to the purchase of the tractor and camera. In addition, the Board of Selectmen authorized the first selectman, Susan Ransfield, to act on behalf of the town of Portland to enter into any and all agreements associated with this project. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to, for a bid waiver for the requirement, required bid waiver.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Who's second?
I did.
Kitch.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? People are leaving, but I think they all voted yes.
At least they're doing it one at a time.
Um, we talked about letter C, disbanding of the Route 17 recreational complex steering committee. They've pretty much finished what they had been asked to do, so if there is a motion...
Some motion.
Seconded by Michael to disband the Route 17 recreational complex steering committee with gratitude for their work, and discussion?
Uh, yes, question.
That's made and seconded, right? Kitch and Mike.
Yes.
So, I just want to clarify, what, what our attorney had said was, any of those folks can advocate for the part individually, what limitation do us Board members have? Like, I'm, you know, I obviously advocate for it, I think it's a great idea, and personally, I can yell with my raptors and scream as much as I want about that.
If you're going to spend more than $1,000 with other people, then you have to register...
As an active committee, I don't...
Actually, I would recommend that you talk with the town clerk about it, they would be able to help you in that office. If you're an individual and you're speaking under your individual rights, I believe that, that you would be fine to do that.
So, and same thing with the folks on the committees, so if they were on the committee...
Individual.
If Ralph or anyone else, they want to go out there and go, it's the best thing since...
It's just cleaner, I think, to disband the committee, because then they're not speaking on the behalf of the committee.
He, he should, he, he's paid by, he's compensated for this Board, and that creates a problem, maybe. So, I would be careful, I would double-check you. When we disband everybody on that group, that's clear, they're protected, they're residents, there's no issue. I, I would, personally, I'd want to, to get clarification, because they've worked so hard. We don't, we don't need a, a dumb hiccup.
Right, and how about, like, for example, like Sean Dwyer, like, as an employee?
No, no.
Right, so, so, clear line there.
He is a no, because he's not a resident of the town either.
Right, okay.
But I will certainly ask Bruce Chadwick about selectmen. I believe your individual rights to speak would trump anything, so...
Right, okay.
All right, I can find that out, Mike.
Oh, so we're in the middle of the vote, right?
Yep. Any other discussion?
Other than just want to thank them all, I thought they did a great job.
That was the motion, to thank them. Well said. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I move to refund Kimberly and Charles J. Tursec Jr., $3,482.96.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I move to refund David L. Cohen, $326.08.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I move to refund Patricia A. Rizzo and Salvatore L. Rizzo, $12.42.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
Move to refund Patrick R. Black, $39.73.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I move to refund Osama Chaco, $55.01.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries?
I move to refund Joseph C. Kidd, $157.12.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
Move to refund Hyundai lease titling trust, $89.53.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I move to refund Michael L. Barthlin, $14.11.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries?
I move to refund John M. DeSina, $15.45.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, motion carries? Um, I don't have...
Can I ask a question, please?
Certainly.
Um, Brian was out for half of that, so he did not...
He did not vote. He did not vote, I would say, from, um, he voted...
Hyundai lease titling.
Yeah, Hyundai.
Where, where did he go in?
Hyundai lease title.
Probably doesn't make any difference.
The last three.
I would say, he voted on Tursec and Cohen, didn't he?
No, no, the bottom three. Did you, no, he left before we started on that.
Last three.
He did the last three.
Okay.
Just came in on the last three.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, status and committee reports, I don't have anything to report. Does anyone have anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, okay. And, public comment has been finished. Informal discussion, I just wanted to let you know that you may have seen this in the paper, the police union did pay for a new canine, his name is Nero. He's a very big dog. And he was in town hall visiting and is being trained by Sergeant Kelly, and they are accepting donations to, to defray the cost, but there's certainly no requirement, and there's no reimbursement by the town for him. We will be feeding him. Lieutenant Mulardo indicates that likely his veterinarian costs will, may be defrayed by a particular veterinarian, but we are prepared to pay that as well. There's enough money in the budget for that.
We used to have one, correct?
Yeah, Jesse was the dog, and he was Peter Perenzino's canine, and when Officer Perenzino realized he was going to retire, he found another home for the dog, another facility. It's been maybe a year or so, been a couple of years.
Yeah, it's probably been a couple of times.
Yep, he's not ready yet, he's in training. I had, and this is another sort of general informal, we have put in some LED lights in the town, and they are not purchased by us, but rather, they are replacements for the EverSource lights, and we've done some on Main Street that they put in, and some on Route 66 that they put in. I've had some good comments back from people that they're brighter, they last longer, they don't go out so often. So, they called me this week and said that the lower, the lower lumens or the lower color, they go from 4,000 K, and I'm not an expert at this, but the American Medical Association recommends 3,000 K, that's what they would be putting in, and to their effort, they will be replacing the brighter ones, which is something the AMA says, is that American Medical Association. So, I just wanted consensus that that's okay. On your part, we will net a savings, we are, I want to emphasize, we are not buying these lights. Some towns have purchased them, this is, see, EverSource is replacing the lighting, and they're offering to do it for the entire town.
For the entire town, did you say?
Yes.
They're going to replace all the lights?
That's what they told me.
They're replacing... Probably going to pay for the fireworks next year.
I did not hear about fireworks. Did you hear something?
When they come and replace it, they're giving it back in, because we've lost two in about six days, so they have a source, Mr. Young, you need to...
Oh, good, that's great.
Yep.
Susan?
Yes.
I would just like to say, I've been out of town, so I got to see the street marking today for school zone, looks great.